The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. This is the February 8th meeting of the Clinton Public Schools School Committee. This meeting is being held both in person and remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Section 20. This meeting is offered remotely via Google Meet technology.
Could I just inform the audience that Committee Member Tina Zapantis is joining us remotely on the phone here?
Thank you. Thank you for vast viewing audience as well as those assembled here. Can we have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Motion having been made, and is there a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the bills? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Tina, could you hear that, motion for the bills?
No, actually, I can't really hear too much.
Okay. So it was a motion to approve the bills?
Okay. I'll go second.
Did she vote in favor of the bills?
Are you voting in favor of the bills?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Let's do a roll call vote to review and approve the minutes of the meeting from January 25th and the meeting of February 2nd.
Make the motion first?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Did I not ask for a motion? I apologize. Motion having been made by Mr. Verakis, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
I see no hands. All those in favor, Joel Bates, aye.
Deborah Goodsell, aye.
Aye.
Matt Verakis, aye.
Brendan Bailey, aye.
Thank you. Unanimous. Thank you.
Tina voted aye, yes.
Dr. Meyer, do you, we've been pretty well served by moving our public comments below our learning model update. Do you want to go through the update first?
Yeah, I could do that since I don't have, there's nothing in public comment right now, so I can do that, and then we'll see if anything comes in. So the learning model update, shouldn't be much of an update for the learning model, except today we brought in grades K, 2, 5, and 12. It went pretty smooth. It was great to walk through the classes. I tried to make sure I walked through those classes and seeing the kids, and so many of them were so happy to be back in school, so really great. And the, so that was good, seeing all the kids. The unfortunate part, and I know some of you know, we got them in for one day, and now tomorrow's going to be a remote learning day because of weather, but that's a weather-related one, so I felt terrible making that call, but I think after consulting with the DPW and the bus company, I think it was the wise one based on the forecast. So our data, we projected, we had that meeting on Monday, last Monday, or Tuesday, excuse me, we projected that the data was going to drop below 10. It did. It dropped to 7.89%. So in your packet, you'll see kind of the updated chart with that. You could see, oh, we've got kind of a three-week-in-a-row decline now trend that we're working on in both our average daily incidence and our percent positivity. The only other stuff I included in the learning model update really is the same presentation that we went over on Tuesday, just so it was in a packet, so if people needed to see it, it was in a more formal packet. Besides that, I think everything is on track right now. The only other thing we could maybe update that was talked about in this was the pooled testing program. I mentioned in the last meeting, we had just found our vendor. We have received the Binax Now Rapid Testing Follow-Up Kits. Those are, we have received those. So the nurses have them, so they can complete the final step of their training, because you need the kits to do that. And we've been creating our accounts with our vendor for the pooled testing and working on sort of the online training modules for that. We have a meeting, have an admin meeting tomorrow to kind of go over some more of the logistics. We'll probably be putting our order in for those tests tomorrow or the day after, just so that we can get those, order them at least five business days, so we've got some time because of the holiday, but I want to try to get it in early so we're not scrambling around for it. So that's moving along. I think that's all we really have for a learning update. We just had one on last Tuesday.
Right, right. Okay. Any questions, Dr. Meyer? Okay. Still no comments.
I do not see any public comment in the chat at this time.
All right, let's move on to your report.
Okay, so we're closing public comment?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. So the retirement and leaves, we just have a couple. First one, Sue Giroux has retired. She retired, so after 32 years in Clinton Public Schools, Sue Giroux retired on January 29th. She started at the Parker School in preschool in 1988. She's been a preschool teacher, a special needs teacher, and ended her career at CMS as a reading teacher. She is also known throughout the area as a talented singer and musician. So she'll be missed, and we'll recognize her at the end of the year, hopefully when we're able to, hopefully we're able to recognize all our retirees at the end of the year, or at least over the summer at the latest. Cassandra Scott is a grade-one teacher at CES. She's just informing us that she will be starting maternity leave approximately April 26th until the end of the school year. As I mentioned before, that's a protected leave, so we don't really need to approve it, just kind of keep people informed, say, know what's going on. And Jill Pasquale, an IA at Clinton Elementary School, has resigned from her position effective February 12th. So those are the staffing updates for the retirements and leaves that I have for you. So financial update, we got the FY '22 preliminary budget. So remember, if you're not familiar, what we normally try to do is a preliminary budget that is very much that, it is preliminary. So, I mean, we do spend some, you know, it's not like every single thing gets thrown in there, it's not a wish list, but we do try to be, you know, we do try to make sure we include things so that, you know, if someone were to say, hey, you got it, this is your budget, then we feel like it has the necessary things in there for us to be able to effectively teach our students. So at this point, what does the preliminary budget look like? So our total operating budget, which we're describing as our three major funding sources, which are the general fund, which includes Chapter 70 and the local contribution, as well as Circuit Breaker, which is a reimbursement of our special ed expenses from the previous year, and school choice. Those three funding sources, those three sources basically, we call our total operating budget. So our total operating budget for FY '21, the current year we're in, is $25,101,987. Our preliminary budget for FY '22, as it stands in this presentation, is $27,457,562, which is a change of $2,355,575, which represents about 9.38% increase, right? And as I mentioned, we do this, you know, this is typical, we kind of put in everything that we think we need, so there's some assumptions in this budget. And then as we get more refined information about what the projection for, as we work with the Finance Committee, as we get better projection of what the, what Chapter 70 aid's going to look like, those types of things, we will kind of meet along the way over the course of the next few months. So I always remind people, we're not asking for 9.38%, we're saying, but at this point, we're saying that's what we think. You wanted us to say, what's it going to take to do everything you want to do next year? That's what it would take. So there are some assumptions, assumptions in this budget. Both our Teachers Association and our Instructional Assistance Unions, those collective bargaining agreements expire on the end of this fiscal year. So we had to include some projected salary increases in this budget. We're not sure what those will land at at this point, so if they land below the projected increase, then that helps the budget. If it lands above the projected increase, then that hurts the budget. But we do have, in part of bargaining in good faith, we do have placeholders there. It assumes a 3% rate increase for tuitions and placements that have not yet informed us of their rate increases. So every year, we have students that go to out-of-district placements or even vocational schools. We don't know what their rates for next year are going to be. We will receive that, because as those places do their budget process, they'll determine what their rate increases are going to be, and we'll be able to continue to go back and refine those. So we assume 3%. It's usually, you know, a fair, it's a reasonable amount. Hopefully, if someone will come in at 1.9 or 2, which they have, a couple of them have the last few years, we'll be able to refine those numbers as we go through the meeting. Pre-K expenses are included this year in the general budget due to the lack of the tuition collection in FY '21. So because we truncated the pre-K program, what we're facing is a lot of, there's usually a handful of positions, like instructional assistants for pre-K, that we fund out of what's called the pre-K revolving account. So basically, any tuition that's paid for the pre-K program goes into that account, and then it can be then used back for the pre-K, and it's usually used for salary. So this year, because we didn't bring in the tuition, we're going to end up, we've included those positions in the general fund. So what else is included in this budget? So the Governor released his preliminary budget, House One, and he talked about funding the Student Opportunity Act, so kind of as part of the Student Opportunity Act to support those initiatives that we identified last year as part of our SOA plan. This budget includes two additional EL teachers and two additional guidance counselors, that's one each at the elementary school and the middle school for both of those. Three additional special education teachers, that'd be one in each building. Two additional related service providers, which will be one occupational therapy and one speech. And the family outreach coordinator, which we hired this year funding out of a grant, but as part of our SOA plan, the idea was to roll that salary into the general fund, so right now, that's in the general fund. From technology, there's an increase for a new student information system. One of the things that we're finding is that we currently operate off of iPass. iPass is essentially dying. It's not really a product that Harris is continuing to upgrade at this point. What they're, they're kind of maintaining it, but they're sort of moving in a different direction as their company, so it's becoming essentially legacy software. So we're looking to switch to a different student information system, which usually requires one year where you end up kind of paying for both of them, because you've got the old one that you're still operating off of and the new one that you're kind of installing and getting ready to transfer that data. Increases in our software budget to support one-to-one technology, a lot of that software is software that we have this year, like iReady and things like that, that we purchased using some of the COVID grants that we're hoping to maintain to leverage our technology. So that's, we've built that into the budget. We've also built in the beginning of a four-year refresh cycle for technology, including buying, so it's buying 150 Chromebooks for students and 25 Chromebooks for staff, essentially at each of the schools, so we can have a refresh cycle there. Wireless Internet upgrades, that's part of our E-Rate Category 2, so that's a funding that's subsidized a lot by the state, so it's almost like an 80% rebate we get on that. So, but we included like $49,000 or something, that's our portion of that, which would really be like, you know, do the math, a couple hundred thousand dollar project that we would get with the rebate. Some other things, it includes eight sections for grades K and 1. Previously, we usually had those at 7. An additional art teacher at CMS, that's to try to help them sort of free up their schedule so that they can actually go to independent schedules. And it does include money for additional tiers of busing. One of the concerns, I do, you know, I don't know exactly what's going to stay from COVID regulations, but I still have a hard time believing they're going to tell us, just pack three kids to a seat in every single seat on a bus next year. So what's not included in this budget? And the main one, I'd say, is COVID-19-related expenses. So things like pooled testing, we're going to be participating in that starting February 22nd. The state is paying that through the end of March. After that, through our vendor that we're working with, it is $6 a kit, or $6 a test. So essentially, if we're testing, you know, if you're testing 2,000 people a week, you're spending $12,000 a week in testing. So the, you know, if that becomes something that's an expectation for next year, that money is not built into this budget. PPE, we did not build additional expenses in for PPE, and we did not build any additional remote teaching positions. So this year, we had some dedicated remote teaching positions. That is not, we do not have any dedicated remote teaching positions in next year's budget. Now, part of that, why are we not doing that? Because we were recently awarded ESER II funding, which is what they're calling it now. Remember, we started calling it the CARES Act, it was kind of part of that, but it was really the grant title, they called it ESER. And now they've come out the second round of that funding, which they're kind of calling ESER II. Our ESER II allocation is just under a million dollars. It is able to be used next year and into the fiscal year after that as well. So our goal right now is to try to, you know, split that money up a little bit so we can use it for this, for next year and the year after, and also to basically kind of reserve that money for right now until we know what the COVID expectations are going to be for us, right? So that money is for the, so these COVID-related expenses that are not in this budget, the reason they're not in this budget is because I'm projecting, once we know what we have to do, based on the guidance as it changes, we would be able to fund that out of ESER II, and it wouldn't impact our regular operating budget. So that's, that's the goal. You can see here under the projected revenue, the one exception I made, when I was trying to start working on sort of this revenue sheet, I did include $200,000 from the ESER funding to kind of offset the extra tier of busing that we would have next year. It did not cost us that much for the extra tier of busing this year, because there was some offset with the remote days and those types of things, so it was more of a wash. But the next year, not anticipating having remote days, we had to budget in some money for additional tiers of funding. So the projected Chapter 70 aid, based on House Bill 1, is, would show that Clinton would get an additional $489,301 in Chapter 70 aid, which is approximately 3.41%. For the town contribution, I put an increase of 3%, which is about $300,000. That's, obviously, we don't know that, right? I mean, that's a wild card. All of these are projections, right? The Chapter 70 number, that could change in the next round of the budget. The town contribution, we won't know what the town is thinking we're going to be able to do until we meet with the Finance Committee. Circuit Breaker, we do know that that number of $628,428, that was what we were reimbursed last fiscal year, so we have to, we're receiving this fiscal year, so we have to use it next fiscal year, so we know we have to apply that 628,428. School choice, you know, I think we had about 750 we were projected at looking at doing this year, which we knew was not sustainable. Once the budget, the town budget was passed, we were able to pass through some of that school choice. I think right now, $715,000 in school choice is a sustainable number in terms of it's what we project to get in revenue next year. We're assuming to get $420,000 in revenue next year. Normally, we would assume more like $500,000, but because we closed school choice this year, we've actually, you know, there's, our school choice numbers are down. And it's not, I'd say that they're, part of the other thing that's happened is as people have moved out of town, they haven't been able to, school choice to stay into town, so stuff that would have become revenue didn't. And then $295,000 would be about a third of our balance. I usually try to do that to help sustainability, is to try to use about a third of the balance so you don't hit a funding cliff, and then you can always adjust as you go along over those three years. So I do think $715,000 is a reasonable sum. And then, like I said, I would project about $200,000 of that ESER II funding to come, to be used to kind of offset that transportation cost. If we were to take that ESER II funding and split it over two years, in FY '22 and FY ' '23, that would give us about $500,000 each year. That means right now, there's about $300,000 that would be available to cover any of these COVID-19-related expenses, like the PPE, the testing, and any accommodations we might need to make for remote learners. But like I said, we don't really know what those are yet. As we get a better sense of what the expectations are going to be for next year, we'll be able to adjust that number, and we might be able to move additional items from the budget into that ESER grant, because it is fairly flexible. So things like getting Chromebooks and stuff like that to start the refresh cycle, like we could move that into the grant if we needed to, those types of things. So, or some of that software that we got this year with COVID funding, we might be able to move it back into there and keep it with the COVID funding. So right now, based on these just assumptions, it would leave us a budget deficit of about $600,000. So basically, what's in here as a budget, if this was what we got as revenue, we would have about a $600,000 deficit, which means we would need to go back through that budget with a fine-tooth comb and see what are areas that we may or may not need, or what are areas we might have to push off another year, or those types of things to try to fill that gap. But like I said, as we go through it, there might be more money that we can apply to like an ESER II grant. If we really are saying, hey, I know, you know, $715,000 from school choice, I know you're saying that that's sustainable, but if it really means getting this one more thing that we really need, could we go up to 750? You know, so those are the decisions I think that we'll be making over the coming months, as we kind of see where does this go in terms of the school funding, and where does this go in terms of town funding? And a lot of that, I mean, I know the Governor was talking today, they were talking about trying to get, you know, working with the federal government to try to get another like stimulus package, I think they were saying, don't call it stimulus, it's like a sustaining package, or whatever they're trying to call it now, but the, you know, so any of those things that end up getting passed in the next couple of months could have major implications if it includes either direct aid to towns or direct aid to schools like the ESER did. So we'll keep our eye on that, and that could always end up changing things. So the next steps, we'll be working to finalize the CBA, try to come to terms with the Teachers' Association and the Instructional Assistance. We'll continue adjusting assumptions as information is provided. So, you know, we built this on a snapshot with some reasonable foresight into what could be, what would our like out-of-district placements look like for next year. But that could change, you know, in another month, when we look at who we think is going to be in an out-of-district placement. It could be more, there could be less, there could be, you know, we could find out a student we thought was staying until they were 22 is actually going to, you know, accept their diploma and leave early, something like that. So to adjust those assumptions as we get more information, as we continue to get information, we'll continue to update and refine staffing based on turnover and retirements. So right now, there's kind of, it's more of a placeholder in there for things like sick leave buyback, kind of loosely based on who we know we're projecting to retire. We can always kind of, you know, as we get closer, we'll know more definitely who's retiring, what that sick leave buyback looks like. The end of last year, we were able to wipe out all of our sick leave liabilities, so we had been kind of carrying over liabilities, because you have, we have three years per the contract, so we had been carrying over a lot of liabilities. We've cleaned those up. So the goal, my goal would be to try to do the same thing, so that we can at least try to budget instead of deferring that debt down the road, because eventually you end up having to pay it. Continue to monitor the state budget process for funding information. Like I said, that includes the federal government too, I guess, and what my other implications might be. And really, our next budget presentation, kind of on our budget calendar, is scheduled to be March 8th. That'd be Budget Version A. That's also scheduled to be a tri-council meeting. So what we might want to consider is having like a remote-only maybe tri-council meeting prior to the regular school committee meeting, like we normally would have it, and then that way I can sort of maybe just share my screen with everybody and kind of walk through a similar type of presentation to kind of go through the budget. After that, sort of those handouts, you can see there's the line-by-line breakdown of the budget. There's, I tried to include notes, most of the notes that are in there are notes that were highlighted in my, in the presentation. So, I mean, obviously, I'm not going to walk through the preliminary budget line by line with you, but I want you to start seeing it, and you can go through it, and if you have specific questions on any particular line, or, you know, most of them, sometimes it's a, you know, a lot of these, you've got to realize are aggregate lines, so you might look at a, you know, a staffing line, and it might have a huge jump, and another staffing line, looks like it has no jump, and it might very well just be that a staff member who's on a different part in the salary scale went from teaching this subject to that subject, and now they're in a different line item. So that's, we, so we always update that based on the salaries. The last sheet has that same sort of revenue summary that I kind of was working off of, that, like I said, they're just kind of made up numbers at this point. I don't know that the town's going to give 3% increase in local contribution. That's, you know, that's a sort of an assumption, with the municipal growth rate was 4.87, that's what they use to calculate the town's increase. Overall, the Chapter 70 formula for Clinton this year called for a $1 million increase in the school funding, but obviously, part of that, that does include indirect costs, like things like insurance costs and that type of stuff as well, which, so that would make up kind of the difference there. I think the last thing on this topic that I included in your packet is the Student Opportunity Act. So there's like nine, no, I don't know how many pages it is, I think it's nine. Seven, like eight, eight pages or so, I think. This was the Student Opportunity Act plan that we approved last year on a remote meeting on April 13th, because those were supposed to be submitted last year. So I went through it, and we tried to kind of, you know, as we go through and we see what the reality of Student Opportunity Act funding ends up being, as we go through this budget season, it's something we're going to want to try to refer back to, to kind of gauge that. However, I was, when you kind of read through it, I was surprised at how many of the things that we've still managed to kind of take steps forward in, even though they did not fund Student Opportunity Act last year. But we still made some strides, managed to make some strides, particularly in things like moving forward with our UDL, Universal Zoned by Learning, Universal Zoned for Learning, Professional Development, and the implementation of WIT and Wisdom, the new ELA program for the elementary grades. So that's, that's the overview of the preliminary budget. It is not, like I said, this is a preliminary budget, this is just sort of a starting point for us, so that's why I didn't go in as much detail. I don't know if you guys have any specific questions, I can try to answer them at this time, or you can certainly reach out to me between this meeting and, you know, the March 8th meeting, if you have any questions on particular lines or things like that, and we can try to either address those at the March 8th presentation or look into certain items.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Meyer for the, at this time, the 500-foot view of the projected budget?
Not at this time.
Nope, not at this time, thank you.
All right. Like I said, if you have, if you get a chance and you want to look through it, and you have questions on individual line items, or would like to know more about what's included in a specific line item, feel free to ask. a specific line item, feel free to, to reach out to me. You know, I know that, I got to thank Annette Cologne again, she does a nice job of, of getting the, all our numbers. So when we're going through these line items, we're really trying to look at what was our actual like year-to-date expenditures so far in some of these and how we can project for next year. And, and Glenn does a lot more of the work trying to deal, dig in with the revenue side and sort of what, what the current legislation's saying and where we stand and what that could look like from a revenue projection. So I think it's, it's, it's been a good process so far and we'll, we'll just keep going as, as the picture gets a little more clearer. The next update is an athletic update. So coming up, we call it the floating season, I think the official term they might be using now is fall two, but it's, it's something to that effect. It's the next season coming up. That season is, there's a one, like a one pager or two pager in here from Mr. Smith, the athletic director. And then there's a couple of handouts about some of the MIAA regulations and guidance for the sports. So basically, there are three, three sports that could run, cheerleading, football, and indoor track. We're not going to run indoor track as like a traditional indoor track program, it's going to be more kind of like how football ran in the fall where we were able to do some like practice and conditioning type things. And the main reason for that is the, is the logistics of holding a meet. If you've ever been to an indoor track meet, you go to, you know, a whole bunch of schools, go to the, the couple of schools that have the facilities and, and there are kids everywhere. So it's really just not, not feasible at this time. But what they want to do is let those athletes get together, do some conditioning, do some running, kind of in preparation for spring track, which will be right around the corner. Cheerleading, it's not the, it's not like the traditional winter cheerleading where it'd be more, I don't know, just almost more competitive cheerleading. It's more like the fall cheerleading, which is more of like, like the sideline cheerleading that you, that you typically see at like a football game. And then football. So those are the sports that are, that they're planning to run in the fall two floating season. At this time, I know that, when I talked to Athletic Director Smith this morning, he had been in contact with Steve Lippa at the Board of Health and they kind of reviewed these preliminarily together. Right now, the Board of Health says they are, you know, they're fine with us moving forward with this season as long as the school committee is okay with it. And they said that they've been, you know, surprised how smooth that the fall, the winter season has gone, excuse me, for basketball. And then, you know, you can see the protocols and you can see everything going there. And then this really, these seasons should be getting back to more outdoor sports again, where it'd be outside. There are a lot of restrictions about like the amount of minutes you can practice, like in close contact and those types of things and like hitting drills and that. So there's, there is a lot of stuff that they're trying to put in to be safe. I also think the other piece that hopefully we can, when we pull it all together, is hopefully, definitely by the time they start playing games, we would have the weekly testing program going. So we'd be able to do weekly testing on, you know, our kids would have a test every week. So, and, and a lot of schools are signing up for that, but we, so hopefully we would know before, you know, we sent kids to go play a game on a Friday night if, if anyone had tested that week positive or not. So it's just one extra layer to try to go through and, and catch any of that asymptomatic transmission. So I think right now, tentatively, it's scheduled to start February 22nd. What they would be doing on February 22nd, I think would really only be, I believe 22nd would only be football for that first week because football needs to get extra conditioning sessions in prior to them being allowed to use pads. So February 22nd, that week would essentially be conditioning sessions for football. So it's, it's rapidly approaching because that's, I mean, that's two weeks from now. I know the league is still working on their finalized documents to kind of come up with based on the MIAA guidance, you know, what are they going to do as internal league protocols? What are the pods going to be? What would the schedule be? They're still kind of configuring those things. So I guess, you know, we can, you know, I don't know if we want to make a motion to vote. I know, I think, I think Mr. Lippa is listening to this meeting as well because I said, I know he read through them and was fine with these so far. The one thing I know he asked to clarify was, and, and John said he'd bring it up, Mr. Smith said he'd bring it up with the, with the league meeting, is what are the protocols for when someone on the, on the team is positive? So is it going to be like basketball where we're saying that for essentially like, you know, if you're an O lineman and you test a positive, pretty good chance everyone on the O line has a close contact and probably everyone on the D line's a close contact and probably, you know, like, so where are we stopping that? Or is it kind of going to be similar of like, okay, we have a positive, we're just shutting down the program for two weeks or something like that? So that's the only other piece of information that he'd like to see clarified and, and I think they're going to try to work as a league on that so that's, so that's clear. But I think that's, that's where we are right now. So I don't know if you guys are comfortable, if you want to still make a motion to move forward with it since we still are a red community, that's kind of been what we've been doing, but.
So why don't, why don't we make a motion, see if it's seconded and then we can have a discussion? Would anyone like to offer a motion to support the fall two floating season?
Yeah, I'll make that. I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Goodsell, seconded by Mr. Verakis, and discussion.
Yeah, Joel, I'd like to just put it off to, very, on this, kind of the same schedule we had with the winter sports where we, they were supposed to start on that Monday, but that Monday we meet, right? We meet on the 22nd. I think the Board of Health meets on that day because, but like Steve said, there are some, you know, the league and I'm not, you know, they're, they're still trying to figure it out. I wouldn't want to say go ahead and then find out later that the, the, the things they put in place, we didn't, we didn't like, you know? And there's a couple of other questions I'd like to, and I've read through these, is I don't see anything about the weather. You know, we're talking about putting kids outside, you know, two weeks from now. Now we're talking about canceling school tomorrow. So, yeah, that's what I'd like, I mean, and, you know, I'm not against it, I've said before, if you've asked me to say right now, my answer would be no, but I'd like to go off to two weeks and then see where we're at. So basically, they, they would, if, if we meet on the 22nd and we're all, we're all happy with it, then they lose one day of practice and they don't even start games until mid-March. So that's, that's my recommendation. And there are some other questions I'd like to get from committee that I can send to you guys too.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would agree that I would like to see, I mean, for me, the winter sports documentation and preparation was extensive. So I, I guess, I'm, I'm glad that there hasn't been an issue. I'm not surprised, given the, the depth of planning that went into it. And, and I, I think that I would like to see more regarding that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a fair point. Like when we, I think when we got together, but before winter sports, there was the MIAA documentation, there was conference documentation. And then I think additionally, after the fact, there was also sort of like a local plan that was documented as well. So I would guess that based upon everything that's being discussed, they probably just haven't had the opportunity of which to sit down and, and go through some of those additional details. But again, I'm in full support of, of a football season or a fall two season for these kids to play athletics, but I think it would behoove us to have those documentation, that documents with us once they meet so we can go over it. And like I said, like Brendan said, if it means one day, that's the 23rd instead of the 22nd, I think we could still get them where they need to be.
And it's just that one sport, right? The other two sports weren't starting on the 22nd.
Right, they would be, they would be later anyway. And the, the, one second. The additional time is not an MIAA requirement for conditioning, right? It's, it's, we wanted to give them more time to get ready?
No, I think it is an MIAA requirement of they need to have so many, like non-padded conditioning sessions before they're allowed to go into like padded practices. So that's why the traditionally in the fall, football gets to start a few days earlier than all the other sports so that they can get those conditioning sessions in prior to going to the padded practice. But, I mean, regardless, I mean, at the end of the day, you're talking about one day. You know what I mean? That's.
Mrs. Goodsell.
No, I'm, I'm all for this, as long as the kids are in school, I'm okay with sports.
Yeah, and the other thing, I know Matt alluded to it, in the basketball, the, the way they, they broke it down, the way they followed was once you made a team, whether it was varsity, JV, or freshman, you stayed there. I'd like to, I don't know how, how that works with the football because as you, you know, sometimes a freshman played three, you know, played at all three levels and I don't know. I just want to get some.
And I think, and I think that is still one of the questions they're trying to work out is, are you going to have, like, first of all, do we have the numbers to have an independent varsity and JV team, right? Normally, part of the reason why you can have varsity and JV is because you got those swing players that are playing like special teams on varsity, but then there you're starting, you know, safety on, on JV. So, so I think that's a big question. And I think that's part of what they're still trying to work out with some of the pods too, is because they might have to match up the pods a little differently so that you look at, you know, maybe it's just varsity only schools and maybe there's some bigger schools that are varsity JV schools and that kind of stuff. So I, I think, you know, I think, I think the A Ds have been doing the best they can with their information and I think they put an awful lot of time in trying to make a successful winter season. But you're right, this, this fall two seems like it kind of snuck up on us. And I do think that they've got, you know, this is, this is the guidance that they have at this time, you know, and, but they're still working on it. So I think it's reasonable to say, let him, I mean, we can still let him go through with signups and interest and trying to get everything going. But before we kind of give a final, before the board would give a final full go approval, you'd like to see the, my understanding is you'd like to see sort of the final plan.
Yeah. I don't want to speak for everyone, but I would like to see that.
You're speaking for me then.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay. Any further discussion or did Mrs. Sepantis want to weigh in at all or?
Tina, did you have any thoughts you wanted to share on that subject?
Joel, I'm good, I'm having a hard time hearing some other comments, I can hear you fine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. Because we have a member online, we'll do a roll call vote. Joel Bates, aye.
Deborah Goodsell, aye.
This is to put it off to the 22nd, right?
It's.
And that's kind of confused because the motion is the.
Sorry, the, the motion is to move forward with it, but I think it's, well, I guess we have to amend the motion then.
Right.
Would you like to amend the motion that we would move forward with the registration process for fall, for, sorry, floating season? And would, would approve, well.
Pending final approval on February 22nd.
Pending final approval.
Yes, let me, that's my motion.
Okay, that's, that's.
I'll second Mr. Bailey's, yes.
His amendment, okay. And we will leave it to the talents of Mary to assure that it.
Make it one big sentence.
That it complies. All right. Having discussed that, all those in favor, Joel Bates, aye.
Brendan Bailey, aye.
Matt Verakis, aye.
Deborah Goodsell, aye.
Could you just repeat the motion, do you, sorry?
Yeah, I'll do the best I can. I believe the motion is to approve moving forward with the fall two or floating sports season pending final approval at the February 22nd school committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Unanimous.
All right. Two more updates. The Clinton Middle School, we did have a meeting with the MSBA on February 4th. You know, I thought for the most part it went well. You know, I think we were able to, I thought that, you know, I thought all the people there kind of representing Clinton spoke very well. I think Town Administrator Mike Ward did an excellent job explaining the, the financial process and the financial landscape of the town. I think that was, that was great. And, you know, I think that, I think the one takeaway I had from that, that she mentioned, which I, I guess I didn't really think of as much, and I think it's probably something we need to start doing, you know, soon. Is starting to gather more public feedback on the types of projects that there's really an appetite for. You know, I know everyone has their idea, you know, I still think in like a perfect world, you could make the high school and middle school and build a new high school, but, but I don't think that's legal under the current MSBA guidelines. So there are different ways to try to work with that in terms of sort of, do you do a project that adds on to this building? But then if you do something like that, now you're building a school that might be a five through 12 or potentially four through 12 school. And even if they're kind of built as two separate schools, we want to make sure that there's community support for, for something like that before we move forward with that. Because essentially what she was saying was, every option that you want to investigate thoroughly is going to cost you in your feasibility study, right? So, so if you know that, you know, this is the site you want to potentially build a new school and that's the only site you really think is reasonable, then any site work or, or, you know, those types of studies that they might need to do, they could focus on that one site. If you list, if you say, well, we could build here or here or here or here or here, and you give them six sites, well, now they have to go and scope out and survey and probably do brown samples and something like that in six different sites. So, so, you know, I just think it's, it's sort of her, her suggestion was essentially to start gathering more community input into what there is appetite for. And I, so I think that's, that's probably the next, the next step with this that we should do. Because whether or not we, you know, whether we're building that, whether we're gathering that information now and we're going to be able to use it, you know, this year, if we get invited in the program, then great. If we don't get invited in the program this year, that information's still valuable because if we go through the process next year, when we get to this meeting, we can say, we already did that, here's the data that we gathered. So I think that's probably the only, my only takeaway from that meeting of what I think we need to do. And Joel, I don't know if I missed anything or?
No, I, I guess the only thing I would add to it is, my takeaway was, in our doing the legwork with all of our stakeholders locally, that investment in time is also an investment in the process, to your point, that, you know, when we, when we, when we establish the direction of where we want to go with MSBA, we end up saving that much more in terms of the feasibility study because it's not so open-ended at that point.
And, and, and in a perfect world, you're also gathering, like I said, what the appetite of the town is and the community is for our project so that when you do move forward with the project, whatever that is, hopefully it was kind of something from that menu that there was support for so it would get funded at a town meeting. So, so I think that's probably our next step. I know some other districts have kind of maybe worked with companies to kind of help them with through some of that process. So I'm trying to get a couple of leads on that to see if there might be, you know, not huge, giant studies or marketing campaigns, but some guidance to sort of see what, you know, how do we normally craft this and, and what's the best, best way to do it? So, so I think that's, that's the biggest takeaway. I'll say this, you know, as far as the middle school project, that meeting is the furthest we've ever gotten. And that meeting was a meeting with the architects that are, that the review, the, the statement of interest and, and they were, they were reviewing it and we were able to, you know, talk about some of the things. And then I followed up, I sent them the study we had done in the summer, so they were able to see that, that whole thing of what the condition was of the middle school and that. So, so I think, you know, it's positive. I think, I said, I think this is the furthest we've made it. Does that mean we'll get invited in this year? I don't know, but it's, so far, I think it's promising.
Steve, do they give a sense for timeline on one, when they plan on finalizing a list? Two invite schools in or two, you know, based upon the recommendation, which I think is a very good one around soliciting the public around what they might have the appetite for, when they would recommend we report back to them what we find?
So I don't think we necessarily have to report that back to them. I mean, certainly if we did it, I think, or if we're, even if we're engaging in the process, it's probably something that I will keep them, you know, appraised of so that they know. But the, you know, I don't think the deadline for kind of those findings would really be, you know, if they did invite us in, you know, we wouldn't really need, if they invite us in this year, I don't think we would need to have that process necessarily done yet, but we would want to have that process rolling so it could be finalized so that if we're trying to get like a quote together for our feasibility study, we can kind of get something more reasonable. Or realistic maybe. And, and then the timeline for the coming in, and off the top of my head, I can't think of it because I don't think she had a very set in stone one. Correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, I have my, I don't, I didn't bring my notes.
The invitation for eligibility would come between April or June, April, April or June. And then, then there's, if, if we're invited in, there's a 270-day window.
To give you, yeah.
There would be a 60-day window for a, a school building committee. There would be a 60-day window for a school building committee. Then there are dates that automatic, that that process automatically puts in play in terms of having to meet certain deadlines and certain levels of success in the process.
So I don't remember because it was the April to June, I think was the range.
Yep.
I think I kind of chucked that up to they don't really know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're in a pretty good position. There, there 100 and, there are over 100 applicants. You know, we're in the 30 for the review phase right now. And then the invitations are subject to appropriation and, you know, scopes of projects.
So we'll try to keep you, you know, I'll try to keep this going as, you know, if we hear any more information and also try to see if we can get going as far as some sort of community, you know, survey outreach, those types of things going on. The facility director search, it's concluded, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's officially public. Did the selectmen vote on that last meeting? Do we know? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Right. So I think there's a candidate, there is a candidate who has been, I think, offered the job and tentatively accepted pending the, because it is a personnel bylaw position, as a department chair, it does need the final approval for the hire has to come from the Board of Selectmen. So I believe they're voting on their, one of their next meetings to formally appoint the new director. And then, once that happens, I'll make sure to invite, invite that individual to one of our meetings so that you guys can, we can all get properly introduced. But that process has pretty much come to a close. So we're moving right along.
Yeah, I just want to echo, similar to what we did with a couple of meetings ago, just the, the immediate dividends of having an H.R. director in town. Like, I think Alexis has done a great job, really helped us in sort of evaluating the situation that we were in, trying to take everything into an account, into account, and really being super organized for us to continue to move down the path. So I thought, again, just a great experience working with her on yet another hire. So I think it's, it's good.
Outstanding. Great. Thank you. Okay. I don't believe, since we just met on the second, that we have any updates on advisory committees?
Joel, I'll just go one thing.
Yes, sir.
Now, like, I could send this to you in an email or just want to do it now. I'd like to put on for the agenda for our next meeting. I think that, I met with the surplus property subcommittee.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for coming back to that.
Yeah, the, the, the first answer they want is, is what's, what's our plan, I guess, for the central office for that big building? You know, if, if, you know, I don't know if, if we have to like give Steve approval to go out and search for a new home or how that works, but they just want to know if, you know, if we're going to move out of there and that's our, you know, decision. And I, you know, I wasn't speaking for the board, but if that's our decision, they would like to know so they could kind of put that in that pot of surplus property that they're working with. I know there's some interest for the church, some properties down around there. So they want to be able to talk to them and, you know, have that answer. And then we can just put that on for next Monday and then if, if you want to address both that and the old fire station, if you want to do the old fire station later, that, that's a total thing. But at least doing the first building next week. And they don't need a date that, you know, we're, we're packing our bags and leaving if we're going to, just, yes, we intend, or no, we do not. So they can plan around that.
So, okay. So for our next meeting, we want to discuss.
You know, do we.
Discuss, okay.
Yeah, I, you know, like we did when Ed DeWalt came in front of us for the.
No, I know.
Right, just something on that.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know anybody else's interest, but that's kind of what they're asking.
Do, do they want representatives at, is this a subcommittee of the selectmen?
Yeah, it was just a subcommittee and they're, you know, I mean, that's the only school property they're adjusting, but they've got the Legion property, the Jeans Auto and all that. But they, when they go, remember, they did that auction a couple of months ago. So when they go forward, they want to, you know, put them all in one big pot, not do it, then, you know, two months later, we say, here's another property. So they just kind of.
Okay.
So all we have to do, I believe, is if we want to keep it, keep it. If we want to turn it over to the town, we vote to and then we just go through that process and then the selectmen will, will deal with that is.
Okay. So, so for next agenda, we can get a report on the property that we need and the property that we don't and what our plans are.
Yeah, just, just so we can let them know, sure.
Thank you.
Steve can get them moving boxes.
So we've had a report relative to facilities and.
Just real quick, for the negotiations subcommittee, we are scheduled to have a meeting tomorrow. I know we've been doing them kind of hybrid through the, through the Google meets and Zooms and stuff. And I don't know, I mean, I can check in with you guys during the day to see what the weather's like. We can either try to just, depending on how the snow is later in the evening when the meeting is, or late afternoon, I think. If it's something where we think we can meet at my office, if that's what you want to do, we can do that. Otherwise, if you're comfortable with it, we could do it where, you know, we all join a Google meet, just like we, they, you know, all join one big Google meet. And then when we have the caucus, we could break out into our, our own Google meet. So either way, I think it would be, it behooves us to have that meeting tomorrow, assuming that they're still available to have.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good. Anything under old business? Anything under new business?
Could I share one write-up that I received from Ellen Walsh? So this is about the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education High School Senior Internship and Education Program. So this is something they started this year. Three CHS seniors have been accepted into the DESE's newly-launched High School Senior Internship and Education Program. Riley Micho, Desiree Tencotti, and Anna Zultany, all working within CPS as interns through senior project, will be paid for their internships and receive additional supports provided through this state-funded program. These girls will be the first paid interns in the history of the senior project program. The overarching goals of this program are to accelerate the growth of the teacher pipeline in the state with a focus on increasing diversity in the profession and to improve educational outcomes for young people despite the pandemic. Specifically, this program will support paid internships in the field of education. The high school seniors provide them with five hours of professional new teacher training and will include a peer support and advocacy community of interns from five other Central Massachusetts high schools. The program will largely rely on current work-based learning structures such as a CHS senior project class for implementation. This will run from March 1st through May 7th. The DESE has partnered with the Massachusetts Workforce Boards to decentralize this process. We will be working with the North Central Workforce Board in Leominster. Staff at CHS have a longtime relationship with Kelly French, the Deputy Director of the North Central Workforce Board, who is our liaison. We're very much looking forward to this fantastic opportunity for our students. So that was from Walsh, who does our senior project program. And it's just, I thought it was a great, you know, this is, this was a new program that they just kind of put out there this year. And to be honest with you, I didn't even realize that they had, we had signed up for it. And next thing I know, we have people accepted. So it was.
All right, it's exciting. It's exciting. And please, you know, extend our congratulations to the three seniors and thank Mrs. Walsh for all of her hard work on their behalf. I think, you know, it, I just think there's something so valuable to be able to understand when you're in high school, what a career might look and feel like. And, you know, to a degree, you can do that in college, but I think that, that having that opportunity now is a terrific step forward. Well done. Great. Anything else under new business?
I would say because the executive, the negotiations meeting is tomorrow, I do not believe we have a, a need to go into executive session tonight.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right. Well, efficiency. We're all, we're all for efficiency. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion having been made and seconded. Mrs. Sepantas, what say you?
Mrs. Sepantas, we're looking to see if you approve of the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Bailey?
Brendan Bailey, aye.
Mrs. Goodsell?
Aye.
Mr. Verakis?
Aye.
Joel Bates, aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good luck tomorrow with the snow.